Good evening and welcome. We will have our student board member, Anise Gomez, from CAMHS, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you very much. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in the front at the assistant secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not the individual members of the board or to the staff. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. Public hearing, there is none. Call for agenda items for separate action adoption, the agenda is posted.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion was approved unanimously. Approval of minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the motion is approved unanimously. Communication, there is none. Public testimony on items listed on the agenda, we have none. Staff report, we have none. Public testimony on items not listed, I do have two requests. The first is Chet Davidson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chet Davidson, locksmith, maintenance, CSEA, Unit B Vice President. There are a few things, first of all, welcome back, everybody. What an amazing summer, work filled, unbelievable amount of work being done out there in Long Beach Unified.
It's good to see you again, Chet.
It's been hectic, good to see you, thank you. Few items I'd like to talk about, we have a very serious crisis regarding our HVAC employees. We only have seven here in the district. Hundreds of units are being installed right now, I mean, being installed, being scheduled to be installed, and we have no new employees. We need more HVAC techs, and we all know this. PC has flown two flyers and we have no skilled candidates. We have nobody that's passing the test, and we need to reach out. Our last previous executive director suggested that he was going to start a program to help train and bring up some of our skilled laborers in the maintenance. And I strongly encourage that. I want to see promotion within our department because we don't get promotion. That doesn't happen very often where I work. We need to reach out, I was told, when I, when I reach out to people, I talk to the experts. I talk to the people that deal with this stuff every day. They said that the test, the performance test, is too archaic. It's just out of date, we're not, we're not getting people to pass this test. And how are we going to reach out to more people to get these HVAC techs? We need more workers. That was the first thing I said when the bond wasn't even on the ballot, was who's going to fix them? So, please, let's continue, if I can be of help, anybody within maintenance to reach out to, to help with that issue. My other point is the 10-month employee. The district is still taking a stance on 10-month employees in maintenance. These people are only scheduled to work throughout the school year, not during summer, not during Christmas, not during Easter. This is our busiest time. I worked almost every day in August, 10-hour days, just ridiculous amount of work. We need more people. These 10-month employees, they're needed. This isn't a point, this decision happened during the crisis in 2009. It was understandable, it's not understandable now. We need to fill these positions, we need to make these people 10-month, 12-month employees because we need them all year round. The schools need repair and they need fixing all throughout the year. So, please, please consider that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chet. King Otha?
Good afternoon, board and board members, everybody. I'm just here today, first of all, to acknowledge Dr. Felton Williams. Doc, I wrote a letter just now, so I'm going to try to read it to you if that's okay. First off, I heard that you were retiring, and I would like to wish you all the best in the days leading up to and after your retirement. May you find, may you enjoy an abundance of excellent health, great wealth, and a peaceful and loving life. I personally want to thank you for all of your guidance. From hearing about your revolutionary spirit to admiring your educational and professional achievements, you truly inspired me to be the best human being that I can possibly be. So with that, I would like to say thank you. Not only thank you, but thank you for your time, your insight, your guidance, and your support. And thank you kindly for writing a letter of recommendation for the Master of Social Work program. I am here today also to inform you that I completed the MSW program and I earned my Master's of Social Work degree.
Congratulations.
Thank you. My educational journey has been tough, but I made a commitment that I would not let you or myself down. And I stand here today humble and very appreciative that I have achieved that educational goal and that I must give credit where credit is due. And you, Dr. Williams, deserve credit, you deserve credit as well. So, thank you for, for, for most of all, for being you and also for believing in me. Your efforts are not in vain, and I consider you my unsung hero. So, from the bottom of my heart and with all of my heart, I want to say thank you. And may peace and blessings from the Most High be upon you always. Very truly yours, King Otha.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
And congratulations on getting that, that degree. I, I just, your tenacity and spirit is so important, and I really appreciate your kind words. More importantly, I appreciate the fact that you got that degree out of the way, so congratulations.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
We'll go fishing together.
That part right there. All right.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, thank you. Y'all guys have a great day.
All right. Personnel, Mr. Meyer?
Yes, classified exempt personnel appointments, we have 10, leaves of absence 8, suspension without pay 1, separation deceased 1, resignations 29, retirements 6, abendments 1, rescissions 1. Certificate personnel, we have appointments 73, in-service changes 19, leaves of absence 2, resignations 3, retirements 3, and I recommend the approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the motion is approved unanimously. Instruction?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Oh, actually, yes, I have a question. There was a, an item in there, an intro to business and finance, a course at Milliken, and this includes personal finance, and I was wondering if somebody could help us out with, do we have other courses like that at, at other high schools? Do we have courses like that? If that could be addressed. I just think that's so important that, that we're teaching common sense things, well, that, that really we should not expect kids to know as teenagers, but common sense things like you're balancing a checkbook, although we don't really use checkbooks, but I guess, I guess that's why we need a course like this, is because the world is changing and we need to keep up with it. So, do we have courses like this at other high schools?
There are similar courses within the business field at our other high schools according to their pathways, and we have actually convened a task force that is using this course to build a course similar to it in content, but it'll be a math course, and it'll be open to all students for the coming school year.
Thank you, thank you. And that's good, considering that we have, that we have a requirement of four years of math.
Pamela, if I could just highlight one more thing, now that I'm on the instruction committee, I'm privy to all this insider knowledge. I wanted to highlight that our CTE courses are also fulfilling A through G requirements. At one of our board workshops, we got another really good data of the improvement in our college readiness, so just wanted to highlight that our CTE courses all fulfill our A through G requirements as well, right? Or one of the A through G requirements.
Diana, your, your question was well-intended. We, we know there's concerns about our students and financing, but good question. Further discussion?
We need a class for doing our taxes, Dr. Williams.
Okay, that's, that's next on the agenda.
We got students who will do your taxes for you.
That's true. That's right, at, at Poly, right? Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Finance report A.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Finance report B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B. On the calendar, I have a potential financial interest under government code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is approved, four votes and one abstention. Purchasing and contract reports.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Other items, superintendent items.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board, we're pleased to recommend that student 021 be readmitted to schools within the school district.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, waive selected K-12 contract provisions.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. What is this?
So, with our collective bargain agreement, any article can be waived if both sides agree, and then it goes, the teachers vote on it, has to, as stated here, have to, at least two-thirds of the members have to say yes. This particular waiver is so that they can have a seven-period day versus the traditional six.
Got it. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. 2018-19 unaudited actual financial report, Yumi?
So, this is our final fiscal report for a year closed 1819. We've closed the books for the year, calculating all revenues and expenditures for the year as well as our ending balances, reporting healthy reserves or ending balances in the general fund, which is our main operating fund, of $269 million, $229.7 million of which is restricted. And so, these balances really provide some cushion as the district continues to have declining enrollment patterns as well as rising expenses, expenses in areas such as healthcare and retirement. And also provides some cushion in the event of a downward turn in the economy when revenues may actually begin to contract for the district. These, this report will be handed to our auditors for our audit, and they will be issuing their audit report in the December timeframe, and then we will be back in the December timeframe as well with our first interim financial report.
Thank you, Yumi.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Resolution 090419-A, District establishing appropriations limits for 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020. Yumi, could you speak to that one?
Sure, this is a requirement of Proposition 4, which was passed in 1979, which essentially sets spending limits for school districts and local governments. So, we have an annual requirement to calculate all the appropriations which fall under, under the limit and determine whether they exceed the limit. And so, we're, we've completed the calculation, and we're asking the board to approve a resolution that appropriations do not exceed the limitations imposed by the proposition.
Thank you, Yumi.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. Resolution 090419-B, to approve sole source procurement of a web-based student-parent-teacher communication software, maintenance, and product enhancement services, and for a ward-of-service agreement to School Loop, Inc., based upon the findings that competitive bidding would not produce any advantage.
Move approval?
Second.
Comes out as simple, is that after all that reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Yes. Oh, discussion, that's right.
Just a question, so is this basically we're paying for the licensing of, for parent view?
Licensing and support.
Okay.
For the software, yeah, for School Loop.
That's all it costs?
And it, I think that's a three-year term.
Over three years, over three years.
I figured we had a lot of students. Is it, is it partially based on the number of students?
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
That's why I thought it would be more, Chris.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the motion is approved unanimously. Now, we're at superintendent report. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Report of board members. Start with our student board member.
Good morning, Board of Education, staff, families, friends, and the Long Beach Unified School District. My name is Anise Gomez, the senior and current ASB president of the California Academy of Mathematics and Science. I'm very humbled and honored to be here tonight and speak on behalf of CAMHS. First, I'd like to take, like to thank my mom for bringing me here tonight and supporting me. I'd also like to thank our principal, Dr. Poffenberger, for attending and supporting me as well. We started the school year with our annual freshman summer bridge, where we welcomed the class of 2023 into our CAMHS family. Through our amazing Link Crew and the support of ASB, we were able to introduce the students to the staff, campus, and bright and spirited nature of CAMHS. This year, we are also joined by new staff, including Dr. Sparks, our new assistant principal, Ms. Agulto, our new head counselor, Ms. Chantel, our new college and career counselor, Mr. Miguel, our new campus security officer, and Ms. Johnson, our ninth-grade computer science teacher. As we segue into the new year, we are very excited for what the future holds. On the first day of school, our ASB held a welcome rally to introduce everyone to the new year and our new staff. This year, our mission is to provide a positive environment in which we can support our students academically and alleviate their course loads. Through ASB, we hope to support our students through events such as talent shows, spirit weeks, and even taking the time to calm our nerves with the power of music. We are currently looking for peer tutors to help students in courses such as AP Physics, AP Calculus, and Chemistry before and after school at our Rebel Center. This year, we have also expanded our, our computer science curriculum with the addition of cybersecurity. With this addition, I am proud to say that we now offer a four-year sequence of computer science. I am a part of the engineering pathway myself, and I've taken computer science my freshman year, and I believe it is an amazing opportunity for students this year to learn about a subject so prominent in today's society and be able to apply their newfound knowledge to their daily lives. With that being said, our school is off to an amazing start, and we are very lucky to have such an amazing staff who are willing to invest so much time and effort into our students. I am very hopeful for what this year has in store for us, and I'd like to invite you all to our back-to-school night next week, September 12, from 6 o'clock to 8:00, and our annual Taste of CAMHS on October 25th from 5:00 to 8:30. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anise, for that excellent report. You mentioned your mom, is she here?
Yes, she is.
Do you want to have her stand?
Yeah.
All right. And this is part of our process, we'd like to probe a little bit in terms of our student board members when they come. And you're a senior, correct?
Yes.
So, what are your plans for, for college?
I hope to major in, I hope to become a teacher someday.
Teacher, okay. Get that, Chris? Okay.
Yeah.
And have you selected a, a school, a college?
I have, I don't have a dream school yet, but I have some schools in mind.
Okay, well, we wish you all the best, and thank you for being part of this body.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
You should start negotiating your salary now with our superintendent.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes, welcome back, everyone. I know when we were here last time, we were anticipating the start of school, and here we are. You and CAMHS and Sato are two weeks in, and the rest of us are just a couple of days in. So, welcome back, everyone, to parents and carers and families and students. We're glad to be back in community with you. I don't have much to report, other than first day of school is always a super fun day. I was able, in the past, I have made it a point to try to get to every one of my schools and spend just a little bit of time, but what I found this year is when I was on certain campuses, they wanted to spend more time. So, I got to go into classrooms, I got to help students find, law students find their way on construction-heavy sites, and see parents in kindergarten getting orientation classes. So, it was a fabulous day, always so full of hope, and I'm grateful for our teachers and our staff and our coachies and everyone who welcomed our families back to campus. So, thank you to everyone for that. And I will say that yesterday was Educare's first day, and for the first time, we have the littlest ones with us. And our youngest ones, I think they said, the youngest is three months. And so, we have a three-month to 11-month classroom. And so, when I was walking with Ms. Harris, the principal, we ended up in two infant classrooms. And the second one, for many of these babies, it was their first time away from their families. And so, as a mom of three, knowing I've left my kids for the first time somewhere, it can be a little stressful for little ones. So, I got to spend about an hour and a half comforting and rocking babies in their classroom. And so, I am so grateful for the care with which our staff gives our littlest ones, who were super distressed, and their families, who were probably equally distressed to leave them. But knowing they're in a really safe, loving environment, I was grateful to do it and have told them I'd be happy to come back, obviously not today because we had a meeting, but maybe I'll be there again tomorrow to support them in that work. So, to Yumi and your staff, thank you for all the hard work on the budget, to Renee, especially if she is still here. Thank you for delivering this baby to us. I'm grateful for all your hard work, and I look forward to a great year.
Thank you very much. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, I'd like to share those same sentiments as well, board member Kerr. Super exciting times for me as a community member, a school board member, and as a parent of a second grader starting school last year. And all the schools started on time, everybody got paid, thanks to Yumi, on time. So, just very appreciative of, of everyone that made this last week. This is wood, real wood up here, right, Chris? You know, go smoothly. If you indulge me, Dr. Williams, I'd love to hear from some of our executive staff on favorite sort of first-week stories from this past week, if you don't mind sharing. I know all of you were just deployed in every which way and form. I, I think it'd be great for our community members to hear sort of what your perspectives from this first week are. So, by all means, share away.
How did I know you were going to go first, Brian?
Well, you know, I don't know. I looked at them, and I, I thought I'd give them a moment to catch their, their thoughts. They're, they're new to their levels, and so, they're thinking about all the cool things they saw. I think for me, it was, it's always a great opportunity on that first day of, of elementary school to see kindergartners coming in, some of them a little distressed as well, but most with their shiny new clothes and their fresh haircuts, and their parents who are just so excited about embarking on this educational career. So, I always loved being a part of that. I had the opportunity to go to three schools where there were new principals that were newly promoted, at Alvarado, at Stevenson, and at Chavez. And it's so great to see the enthusiasm that the principals bring, but equally the enthusiasm that the teachers and the staff bring in supporting a brand-new principal and everything that that entails. The parents were just so, so optimistic about their school and their community. So, I just had a great time, meeting the new kids, meeting the new principals, seeing them at work on their very first day. And it's, the first day of school is just such an exciting and inspirational time, so thanks for asking.
I'll share a couple of stories with you. First, many of us welcomed students at Stevens, that the principal, Megan Treiber, had invited us out to welcome the new students at Stevens, and had music playing, a nice line of staff. Many of our HR team was there to support, and just seeing these children, one, completely shy about having to walk through all these adults that had to high-five them, and others, super excited just to participate in that sort of welcoming. So, it was a real exciting time to be there and just, just see that excitement. The parents also dropping off their children, just with this huge smile on their face, seeing all these adults out there to welcome them. So, that was really special. Also spent some time at Jefferson, seeing the new construction, so it was really exciting to see all the work, last-minute work that happened to really make that school open on time. And to hear the kids just super excited about being, one, back at their home site, and, two, just to see how amazing it looked. And to hear the, from the kids themselves to say, wow, I'm so excited to be here. And for the students that, they actually had their ninth graders come back and actually lead their students, the sixth graders through, and the ninth graders saying, gosh, I wish I could actually come back to this campus as well. So, that was just a really exciting time to, to see these children just appreciate this beautiful school that reflected the great achievement also that they had, that they had made over the past year, so.
For the high school perspective, I want to thank CAMHS and Sato. This is, started at the end of their second full week of school, so they've done, started with a great start at both schools, both campuses having a great job. Sato had their first graduating class in June, so now they're going on to their fifth year. The other exciting piece that I would recommend everyone out there to do is to follow our high schools on Twitter, to see all the amazing stories, the amazing posts that our teachers and staff have done, to recognize our students for the first day of school, they're on their, they're in their, on their Twitter feed. You could see the balloon arches, the music, the, the fanfare, the Link Crew pieces, orientation. So, for high schools, it really started in the summer with all the orientations and the Link Crew events that we had, parent meetings that we had with our parent, with our parents and staff. So, thank you to all the teachers and staff that put that all together. It was a lot of work, a lot of buildup, a lot of just coordination of different offices and level, and, and different partnerships to get everything started, from rallies to people who have donated, our business partners who donated a lot of items, to our students, to uniforms and backpacks and everything else. So, again, I want to celebrate the fact that, yes, schools just started, but thank you to our community to really welcome our students in a great, positive, amazing way, and the resources are always out there for our students. But again, if you really follow all the high schools on Twitter, you could see all the great things that our community does for our students and our teachers and staff, too. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Ray, are we going to get titles on our assistant soup's for elementary schools, middle schools, K-8, and high school? Since no one can see them on the...
Lower thirds?
Yeah?
Whatever you want.
Two, well, two, two in new positions this year. Two of them are in new positions this year, so if you have some nice things and nice notes that you want to send along to our two new assistant soup's, that would be nice as well. Thanks, Dr. Williams. Ms. Craig?
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just, you know, echo those sentiments about first day of school. And Dr. Benitez, very nice idea, having our, our executive staff report on first day of school because it's a, a different perspective and new voice, well, not new voices, but, you know, different voices, you know, being lent to this conversation.
You're putting something in my head now, board member Craig, and I might start doing this for all of my board reports. So, that everyone hangs out to the end of the meetings, all right?
All righty. So, I'll just, I'll just add that... Alrighty, um, so I'll just, I'll just add that, um, the school that I chose, I don't, I can't run around from school to school only because I feel like, um, when you take the time to watch the, um, kids arrive at school, that, it's like a, a singular moment when they're arriving, and, um, besides, I'm older. So, um, I chose to be at Riley for this, uh, first day of school, and the Riley teachers and parents had created these, um, uh, chalk messages in the front of the school, welcoming the kids back, and they, um, made different posters that the kids could pose in front of for pictures, and I believe it was said before, the parents are so happy, the parents are so happy the kids are back at school, they're now our responsibility, they have a little bit more time without the kids, so, parents are so happy. Um, and then also, there was an event at Signal Hill Elementary on day two of, uh, school for our elementary students, and that was about the partnership with Home Depot. Home Depot chose...
Office Depot.
Office, what? Oh, my gosh, did I say Home Depot? Well, I was at Home Depot over the weekend, apparently.
Aw, shameless bug.
I know, ooh, oh, I take it back.
Great mom.
Um, mm, okay, so Office Depot, and Ray, we can fix that, right? Not like we're live, live streaming or anything. Um, we'll just, okay, we'll fix that in the captions, so Office Depot, Office Depot chose eighteen schools across the country to partner with, and they had a presentation and celebration at Signal Hill Elementary, um, day two of school, uh, they handed out backpacks with, um, school supplies, that kind of thing, also, they chose, um, one teacher in particular kind of do, win this, I thought of it as like a grand prize, it was a laptop computer, some other school supplies, and that, that went to, um, third-grade teacher, uh, Ms. Plexico, so congratulations to her, and congratulations to the community of Signal Hill Elementary, and I think, Mr. Meyer, you, um, you had other things to add about that event?
Well, it was a wonderful event. I think the thing that impressed me the most, after only four hours of school, here came the kindergarten kids marching in, sitting down, very cross-legged, very dutifully, you know, wide-eyed, and what, what do we have, eight hundred students there at Signal Hill, every single one of them in sharp uniforms, haircuts, looking so great, but it crossed my mind, what a challenge for our teachers, to, to work with these kids, accelerate their proficiency in academic areas, and to make them feel welcome and safe and warm, and here we are, California ranked forty-seventh in per pupil expenditure as a state, and the job that our teachers and staff accomplish to make our kids succeed, uh, kudos to our teachers and our staff in our district, you do a marvelous job, and have a great year.
Thank you both, and I wanted just basically to commend the district, um, for its recognition by the...
Absolutely.
...Learning Policy Institute, very impressive, and let me just read a couple of the remarks that we just learned about today. LBUSD is a leader in the state of California in supporting student achievement, especially for students of color and students from low-income families. LBUSD has been nationally recognized as a consistently high-functioning district for more than two decades, and the accolades go on and on and on, it talks about the tremendous work of this district, and we are also very proud of the, the recognition by the Learning Policy Institute, and for all of the folks in this district that make this happen, and that's a very nice picture of our, our, of our deputy superintendent here that graces the page of this report. Um, Chris?
Yes, um, before I give my report, Yumi has a statement that we'd like to share with you.
Sure, I'd just like to report on our very successful bond sale, so we went into the market to sell a hundred and fifty million dollars' worth of Measure K bonds and three hundred million worth of Measure E bonds, we, um, had, uh, investor bids from some of the largest investment houses in the world, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, J P Morgan City Group, and Morgan Stanley. Morgan Stanley won the a hundred and fifty million dollar Measure K bid with an interest cost of two-point-seven-eight, Bank of America won the three hundred million dollar Measure E bid with a, with an interest cost of two-point-eight-eight, so we were under, able to achieve sub-three percent interest on both of the, on both of the sales. Um, so we were bolstered really by a really strong credit rating, so, um, a credit rating of double-A-two from Moody's and double-A-minus from Standard and Poor's, and in their credit reports, they issue a credit report, um, and they cited exceptionally large assessed valuation of the district, uh, good policies and procedures under their financial management review, and a trend of very strong available reserve, so it was really very strong credit ratings going in, which really helps garner lower interest rates, um, and in addition, we're just in a really favorable interest rate environment for bonds with the global economy, with, with volatility in the stock market, there are a lot of people like to invest in more safer-type investments such as municipal bonds, so we call it the flight to quality investment, so, good for us and good for the taxpayers who are really backing the bonds.
Yumi, I have to say that I was out of the country, and I got a re- request that I had to get back here and sign the paperwork for all that stuff to go through, and I was told that I needed to do that immediately, so, when I called back and to check, I, I did find out that I had additional data to get back here, to get it signed, but all that's good, all that's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is really important because, um, what this means is that the board's done a great job in, um, looking at the finances of the district, because this saves the taxpayer millions of dollars, um, because there are districts in California where they have been downgraded, and, and this is a great example of financial literacy, you want a good credit score from the get-go, um, so, uh, you don't want a bad credit score because it's really hard to get out of a bad credit score, so, and I just want to commend, uh, everybody for a great opening of school, and also to share that, um, the, uh, this time of year we get a lot of data back, um, and one of the data pieces that we get back are from the college board, and how many of our students received, um, AP Scholar awards, uh, ace, uh, with distinction and so on, as well as AP Capstone, so, just as a, a general piece of information, about thirty-five percent of our graduating seniors last year received one of these awards, and we had several schools, i.e. CAMs, where over fifty percent of the graduating seniors either received a Capstone Award for their work in AP Seminar and Research, or AP, um, Scholar with Distinction or with Honor, so kudos to our, our students and to our teachers, you're doing remarkable work each and every day, and I agree with you, everyone should have four years of computer, uh, science, because that is the wave of the future, so, congratulations.
Thank you, Chris. Announcements?
Um, yes, I'd like to congratulate Longfellow, because they earned the National PTA School of Excellence Award, and it's the third time in five years that they've earned this award. Um, I'd also like to add that, um, Office Depot offers discounts to PTAs, so thank you, Office Depot.
It's Office Depot.
Office Depot.
Just wanted to get that right for the record, Diana.
Yeah.
Other announcements?
Um, speaking of PTAs, I know, uh, I, somebody reached out, I think from Lakewood's PTA on Twitter, asking me to join, um, the cool thing is, instead of writing a check, which I used to do all the time to all the different PTAs that I would join, as many of our PTAs, uh, you can be a member by joining online, and so you can be a member of as many PTAs as you would like to support, so, uh, if you, if someone reaches out to you, uh, you can actually search, once you become a member to one, you can search Long Beach, and it'll bring up all the Long Beach PTAs that you can sign up for online, so, uh, if you haven't sent me a request, please do so, schools that have it online, and I'd love to join.
Thank you, Megan. I want to just, uh, thank our student board member for being part of our board tonight, and thank her mom for bringing her tonight. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We are adjourned.